And tonight is the, um, is the actual program.
He is over at Lebanon.
We are on the air, folks. And I want to welcome all of you this evening. Um, and a cold evening we have outside, so I'll call the meeting to order. And would you like to join us in the pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, Mary.
Wilson.
Here.
Collins.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Callum.
Here.
Hufstenski.
Here.
Colburn. All right, and Bill Colburn is excused. So, okay, first on the agenda is the proclamation this evening, and this is for Albany Charitable Toy Run for December 7th, 2014. Whereas the Association for Motorcyclists of Oregon has been sponsoring a toy run since 1984 to gather together members of motorcycle groups, car clubs, and interested individuals to provide toys for needy families. And whereas there are families with children in the Albany area that will not enjoy a full Christmas due to financial hardship. And whereas a group of people continue the tradition of having the annual toy run because of all the good work and fellowship. And whereas businesses and groups around the area help to sponsor the toy run such as the American Legion Post 10, Walmart, Minuteman Press, Road Maggots, Christian Motorcycle Riders, and The Cutting Room. And whereas on December 7th, 2014, the toy run and parade will again be conducted with the gathering at the Walmart parking lot and ride to the American Legion for gift distribution and lunch. Now therefore, I, Sheriff Canopen, Mayor of the City of Albany, do hereby proclaim December 7th, 2014 as the Albany Charitable Toy Run Day and urge all citizens of Albany to recognize that day as a time of sharing and giving by motorcyclists and others to be aware of their motorcycles on our streets and highways while they ride to provide a happier holiday season to families and children. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed as 12th day of November 2014. So this has been, um, a wonderful, um, organized, um, toy run each year. And Bill Root, did you want to say a few words about it? Um, I am amazed every time I come, I've just never seen such a huge pile of toys and how they can all come in and fill up that stage there that's been at the pass at the Eagles. And so this year, you have kind of a different route and for the toy run.
Yeah, uh, for a couple of reasons. Kmart shut down, so we moved our starting from Kmart to Walmart. And, um, and our parade route in the past had been just across Albany Avenue to Salem and then down Salem to Main Street and down to Water and then down to the Eagles. Well, this year, it's going to be a lot different. We're going to have approximately 10 miles of parade route. Um, we're going to go down the, uh, Goldfish Farm Road, clear to, um, Knox Butte, and then down Knox Butte to Century Drive, and then up to the, uh, Underpass at, uh, Millersburg, cross under the Underpass there, and pick up Salem Avenue there. So we won't be blocking any streets or anything for the civic or anything like that. We'll be on Salem Avenue and we'll go clear to this roundabout, and that's going to be a little exciting. Um, all these motorcycles trying to go around that roundabout.
Yeah.
Um, and then go up Seventh Street and turn there off Main and, uh, Seventh to American Legion. Um, a couple of reasons why we're doing it this year, obviously, is because of Kmart, and we wanted to do something besides the Eagles. Uh, it's been a very good experience for many years, and we're trying something a little bit different. Um, one of the things that we've done this year that has been very good is we've been getting businesses to sponsor. I got one business, small business, um, gave me a hundred dollars. She says, "Go out and buy toys." I said, "Okay, we'll do that." So, so that's, that's nice that we're having other people sponsor, um, toys other than the motorcycle groups, but, and that's important, too.
Yeah. Oh, and always seeing the kids there, sitting there waiting and waiting for their time to get those toys. They just are, you know, just, um, sitting there waiting patiently, and they're very quiet, and they're just very anxious. But yeah, it's a, it's a joy to be able to watch it and be a part of the event, so.
Yeah, we're, we're doing, something else different is we're going to invite people, and we're only going to have it for the invitees. Um, of course, if somebody shows up that hasn't been invited, we're not going to turn them away.
Right.
But anyway, we're, we're going to, uh, allow them to pick two cliffs right off the top, and, uh, so it'll be a little, little different, but it'll be good.
Yeah, it's fun. Okay, well, thank you. Thank you so much, Bill.
Madam Mayor, may I ask you a question? Hey, Bill, where do you get the, um, the names of the kids, or where do you get your information from?
We go through the, the school district, and we get the name of the kids from the kids that get the breakfasts.
Oh, okay. All right.
And, uh, and then they'll tear down, they'll, they'll have, well, probably in the neighborhood of 65 to 70 kids that they'll invite.
Well, good, good. I just wondered where you got that, and that, I think that's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much, Bill. So, okay, um, next we have our scheduled business as a public hearing, and this is over the Community Development Annual Report. So, Ann, would you like to kind of update us on this?
Thank you, Mayor and Councilors. This is the second required public hearing that we need to have every year to invite the public to provide feedback on needs they may see in the community that could benefit from community development block grant funding, and also to hear comments about our performance to date on the programs and activities that we have undertaken. So tonight, uh, there is a annual report which goes through June 30th, 2014, and unfortunately, there's not a lot of information in that because we spent most of last year into the spring and almost up to June 30th getting a lot of our programs for two years up and running. But in your council packet, the last two pages, 26 and 27, of what I provided is a snapshot of progress to date through a few more months. And right now, just a little background information, um, we are running two years of programs right now, and so most everything is summarized in this table here. But I wanted to have the public hearing open in case we do hear comments from the public to date. I have not received any comments. We have invited, um, agencies throughout the area to participate in tonight's meeting. Uh, and then I thought afterwards, it's a great opportunity for us to go over existing programs, for you to ask questions about those, and also if you have any ideas in driving around the neighborhoods, something that's going on in the community. So before the public hearing, I just wanted to go over some of the CDBG, um, program goals. So HUD requires us to look at three program areas: decent housing, a suitable living environment, and expanded economic opportunities. And so our plans all focus on these three goals. So, um, we've got housing rehabilitation, homeless prevention, primarily dealing with the decent housing goal. And suitable living environment, we've really looked at our low-income neighborhoods and public facilities that have become deteriorated or dangerous, and improving those. And then expanded economic opportunities, we have got a couple of programs going on. In the next slide, I'll show you about those. Just a little more detail on our specific activities in decent housing. Housing rehabilitation loans, no interest deferred loan payments, that program's up and running. Essential repair grants, small grants to make homes eligible for another source of funding, which is whether it's Asian assistance that's free funding through Community Services Consortium. Then Jackson Street Youth Shelter and Albany Helping Hands are receiving money to help with acquisition of homeless shelter for the youth shelter, and then Helping Hands is acquiring two houses over by the existing shelter and rehabilitating one of those. And then under suitable living environment, you may have noticed that Prairie Winkle Path has recently had a, quite a long stretch, about 1,200, 1,300 lineal feet, has been completely replaced with a wider path, and the grade has been leveled out. And that was a CDBG project, so that's one of our first very visible projects in the area, and that is expect, it's in one of our low-income census tracts which made it an eligible project. And, um, that project is now done. And the other public project is Sunrise Park, and that is going to be completely redone with all new play equipment. It's actually being reorganized and, and the activities are, are being relocated to a more visible area. It'll include a parking lot with ADA accessibility. We'll be incorporating lighting and, uh, different features to reduce, uh, crime or other activities that are going on and make it a safer place. And the neighborhood is really excited about that coming up, and that will happen late spring, early summer. Expanded economic opportunities, Lynn Benton Community College is offering two programs which are either free or greatly reduced in price. There is a microenterprise course, it's actually two levels of courses that are offered for free, uh, to anyone looking into, um, a microenterprise, starting a business or a new enterprise. And then the Small Business Development and Advising Program offers reduced enrollment in a sort of a business management program to help small businesses expand and stabilize their business and then, of course, grow their business, with the main goal being to add jobs for low-income people in the area. The last program is one that we are running. It's a small business grant program offered to microenterprises and small businesses with a goal for job creation. Lastly, Public Services hits a lot of those three target goals. We have six different agencies in the area that are receiving funding with our two years of funding and doing a large variety of, hitting a large variety of need in the, in the community. Family Tree Relief Nursery is helping, uh, prevent child abuse, and that also keeps families together, prevents kids from going into, uh, foster care. Youth Build is working with youth on job skills. Chance has a GED program, and they are trying to help, uh, those with substance abuse issues turn their lives around. Cardva is, uh, trying to help the Albany residents stay in Albany with shelter in Albany through Albany Hotels. Then the Jackson Street Youth Shelter does, um, case management and outreach through their Cornerstone Youth, uh, Center already here. And Fish has expanded their programs to serve women with children, um, both overnight and case management. So that, I would, I would like to, uh, I could respond to questions now, but I thought we could let the public hearing happen, and then I could come back.
Okay, all right. Any questions of Ann?
No.
All right, okay. Thank you, Ann. So with that, I will open the public hearing at 7:28 PM. And is there anyone that would like to comment on, um, this CDBG plan? Okay, all right, not seeing anyone, so I will close the public hearing. Um, or there was somebody that signed up? Oh, nope, yep. Patty, that was on the wrong one, so.
[laughing]
So I'll close the public hearing at the same time, okay? And, um, Council, what would you like to do with this plan? So, and Ann, is there any other comments you need to make?
No, just if you have any suggestions or see any needs, we would love to get those. The Community Development Commission is beginning planning for programs that would start next July, so we have to plan pretty far out because we have to have that plan ready for the public in early April. So, um, we are beginning work on that. And this is a plan that I'll just submit to HUD electronically, just if you can authorize staff to submit the, um, the program report, actually, to HUD. That's all that's needed, thanks.
Okay, all right. Okay, Ray, and then Mark.
Since a lot of these programs were just getting up and running and getting started, there has been no expenditures, by the end of the fiscal year, are you required to have some at least in every category?
Very good question. Uh, we have spent a lot more than is showing up in the annual report. If you look on the, um, two-page spreadsheet, we've spent about 200,000 once I submit for the reimbursements to date when I get the bill for, uh, Prairie Winkle Path. And so in order to receive future funding, you can't have more than 1.5 times your annual allotment. And so right now, we have two years of funding, so I need to spend down 50% of one year, and I'm hoping that we'll do that by the end of this year, uh, because we won't be able to receive any future funding. But I'm, I'm not concerned, I'm looking at our projections, and what's not included in that spreadsheet is also my staff time and expense. So to date, we have gotten reimbursed for 60,000 or 70,000, but I have about more than 100,000 to submit for reimbursements within the next couple of weeks.
All right, Mark, did you make?
Well, just a reminder for Council, on this program, all this stuff you see being done is, is done with outside funding. This isn't general fund money, uh, it's money that we receive, uh, and utilize, including Ann's time. Really, the only participation that the city has or skin in the game is some, some administrative support of Ann's work, but, so it's a lot of good work that we're able to, uh, use this outside funding for.
All right, Tom, thanks. Okay, any other questions?
Just good programs.
Okay, Council, what would you like to do with this item?
Move for adoption of the plan?
Okay.
Okay, and any comments, discussion?
Second.
Okay, is that, all right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right, thank you, Ann.
Thank you.
Okay, um, next is business from the public, and Patty, I think you wanted to, um, miss say some comments. [laughing] You had a long day yesterday.
Sheriff Canopen, City Council members, I'm Patty Louisiana, I'm the chairperson of the Albany Veterans Day Parade, and while I'm still awake, I just want to say thank you very much for allowing us to close the streets, some parking lots, use the city plaza, and pretty much dominate the town with veterans yesterday. It was wonderful. Um, though my name is always out there, uh, we have over 100 volunteers that come and help in the morning, and I can't say enough about all the volunteers. They come from Carvalis, they come from, um, Home Depot, they come from Hewlett Packard, they come from Lebanon, from the Lebanon Strawberry Festival, and there are some that I only see once a year, but I know they're going to be here to help, and it's just amazing. And the Oregon National Guard and the Oregon Air Guard, um, step up as well, and then our veterans come into play. So, though normally you require someone to say their address, I think for the last month, my address has been the Red Caboose on Third and Ellsworth with a couple other volunteers. Um, we always look at the parade as a success when there are no accidents, we look at it as a success when people come and join us and crowd the streets, and then the restaurants are overflowing. And with the businesses continuing to step up, we had, [coughs], Ciberus Bistro put on a World War II veteran, um, luncheon free of charge to them after the parade, and it was packed. And they opened it from noon until 3 o'clock, and I received a call when the, uh, Grand Marshall Banner arrived at 1 o'clock, and they asked, "When might the veterans be showing up?" Because they hadn't yet. And I said, "Perhaps they're watching the parade still." And as I walked, [coughs] at the very end of the parade, that's exactly what they were doing. We had over 100 chairs set out around the reviewing stand, and the veterans were still there. Um, and then they went, uh, to have lunch afterwards. So it was all eras, but we had the World War II, um, veterans out front, and they were thrilled. Um, they were from, uh, 85, and, um, I think there were several in their mid-90s. The gentleman that walked, um, the parade in front, he was 84. He was the first application that came in, and he insisted on walking, though I had a car for him as well. So thank you very much for allowing us to honor the veterans, because it really does put Albany on the map. We received calls from all over the country. We received a number of calls from Washington, uh, the State of Washington wanting to know exactly how to find Albany, how to find the parade, and I said, "Just come on down and you'll find it, you won't be able to miss it." And, um, so we like to put Albany on the map in a very positive way, and that is what, another reason what Albany is being known for.
And you have done, so.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, we're so very grateful, Patty, for, because you're so organized in the way you have that parade just, um, running so smoothly, it's just wonderful. I'm curious, who won the best float?
That I can't tell you because I haven't seen the results, but I know that they were supposed to be taken to the paper, so.
Okay.
Um, so I'll be able to see that very shortly.
I did get a photo of the, the Home Depot one, and that one was awesome.
Home Depot was wonderful, absolutely wonderful.
Yeah, a lot of time was put into that float.
It was.
So that was beautiful. Did they do it here locally, you know?
They do. They do it on their own time there at Home Depot, and every year, they have just gotten bigger and better. And in fact, when you go into Home Depot, you'll look up, um, above the cash registers against the wall, and a lot of each one of those handmade, um, wooden plaques are what each float was for that given year. So they put a lot of time and effort, and this was just absolutely fabulous.
Oh, it was beautiful, yeah. That was amazing, yeah. One thing we were curious, though, um, the flyover from the, uh...
Oh, the flyover was ordered, the flyover. There is a process. I put through all the paperwork, and I worked with the Pentagon, um, requesting the flyover. And then three weeks prior to the parade across the nation, it was squashed. There were no, there was no flyover officially from the Air, um, Air Force or Air National Guard, um, at all.
Okay, is that the first year that happened, or did that happen before?
No, that was also last year because of the sequester.
Yeah.
And, um, but they were going to be opening it up, and like I said, all the paperwork was done, and then even the National Guard called me just to confirm that I had gotten that email, and, uh, I didn't say anything about it because I'm always hopeful. And, um, Brigadier General Stensel of the Air National Guard, he comes down every year and, uh, was sorry that there wasn't going to be a flyover. But I do have to let you know, 20 minutes before the parade, when we have just shy of 400 motorcycles showing up, and it was absolutely gorgeous day, I can't tell you that I ordered that, but I'd like to say I did, but there's something about parade days that it doesn't rain on the parade. But right above all of where the motorcycles were lining up, there were two bald eagles flying around, and they were just soaring. And they were up there for a good 10 minutes, and we all decided that that was our flyover. So if anybody missed it.
Oh, how neat, yes.
But, um, but yeah, I hadn't seen any, um, bald eagles in, in Albany before, but it was absolutely beautiful sight.
Wow, yeah, this is a few out at Talking Water Gardens, so, but what, oh, what timing that was yesterday.
It really was. I decided that was a good omen for the day.
Uh-huh.
And we, uh, started right at 11 o'clock. Uh, the last float was on the line of march at 1:22. I have a two-hour, um, closure, road closure permit from ODOT, and I was just a few minutes off, but ev- every entry, we had 219 on our list, and we do an alphabetical, a street location, and also an entry list for all of our parade aligners. And every entry was a little bit larger this year, a little, a few more cars, floats, and people walking. So I think that was a little bit why, because last year, it was right about 214, 215 entries, and that's pretty much what we could accommodate in that time.
Yeah, oh, that's just wonderful, just excellent, just excellent parade, yeah.
Patty, was there any additional effort to encourage children to come out? I think some of us observed that we thought there were more kids on the curb line this year than we had ever seen before.
Yeah. You know, we didn't officially do that, but I know that there were some buses that came up from Eugene because of, um, people hearing about it. Um, it was out on the radio, it was in the radio in the Portland Market and the Eugene Market very heavily, and, uh, received a call from a woman who was bringing up approximately 60 children and wanted to know where to park and where to eat, and oh, by the way, but bathrooms are open. And, um, I said, "Any restaurant will accommodate you." And that's the one thing that we've, uh, this was my fifth year, um, working with the parade, and I kind of had a five-to-10-year plan, and I think we're hitting it right about now. The first year was to start it on time, and we did, and we have every year since then. Um, the next couple of years was to make sure that the businesses downtown were open, open their doors, even if they had to open a little bit early. People not, might not buy at that time, but maybe they haven't been downtown for a long time. So it was a good opportunity for anyone to go in and do a little bit of looking before the holiday season, so that was something that we always took a look at. And, um, then it was to make sure that everyone else was just understanding that no matter what day, except on Sunday, um, the Veterans Day Parade would take off on and be marching through the streets on Veterans Day. So Tuesday, I really thought, "Oh, I hope people show up," you know, because we encourage it, we, we talk about it, we put it out on the radio, but in, until it actually happens, and I walked through at the very end of the parade, um, people are still there through the entire parade, and that's very heartwarming. And I think the spectators are as much a part of the parade as the people walking through.
Almost, we thought there was more people than last year, so, but last year, I think, did we have the fog, was it kind of?
It was foggy in the morning, and, and it was really cold, but it, it cleared off. Um, but this year, it was quite nice.
Yeah, oh, wonderful. Any questions? Yeah, Bessie?
No, I just want to say, Patty, I don't know you, but you did a marvelous job organizing it, and appreciate, and since you're, we're honoring the World War II vets, I mean, it's always, uh, very touching and, and emotional and stuff, but I know my dad was looking down, and he was, he felt like he was being honored, too, and I just want to thank you for doing such a great job, because this is one time when people can really show their patriotism.
They can.
And how much they care. And you provide the opportunity for them to care, and so I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
There was a gentleman in the parade that actually went, uh, all through grade school and graduated from high school with my father.
Oh.
As a World War II veteran, and he was 90, and my dad passed away a while ago. There was also a gentleman in the parade, uh, one of our World War II veterans who served in the same unit as, um, as a Major General Hokinson's wife, and she was able to meet him because he knew her father. So there's some heartwarming stories that just happen, and, um, that's, to me, what the day and the time is all about, where it's a reconnection. Some people don't have that connection, and I continue to say, "So many were never thanked." And especially these World War II veterans, there's a picture on the Oregon National Guard, um, website where it's the generals that have gone down and are shaking the hands of the World War II veterans that are there. And, uh, the Veteran of the Year banquet that we had the evening prior, um, our speaker was 93 years old. She was, um, the 2014 Woman Veteran of the Year, and she came out of McMinnville, and she brought her boys, uh, the other five Band of Brothers with her, and, uh, they were right up in front in the parade, too. So it's an opportunity for so many just to be recognized one last time.
That wonderful, yeah.
So we're all going to get some sleep, and we'll start again next year, and, uh, we just really appreciate it. Uh, we know that we impact the entire city, um, and we try to, within a very short amount of time, uh, pack everything up and go forward, and let the city get back to normal, but truly, it really doesn't, because they are all out at different restaurants, or they are gathered at their home. Um, my son was here this year, he's a member of the Oregon National Guard, and he said he ran into a, uh, a gal that was asking where the parade started, and, uh, he got to talking to her, and their father was a Vietnam veteran, and he had just recently passed away, but all members of the family gathered, they were out of Eugene, and they came up just to witness a true Veterans Day parade. And I think there are wonderful parades, but I think Albany just really has something special here, and I'm just honored to be a part of it.
Thank you so much.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Patty, so much. We're very grateful for all your hard work, but, hey, thank you. Okay, is there anyone else from business from the public? Okay, not seeing anyone. Okay, um, Council, there is an ordinance, and that's on page 29, and first reading.
This ordinance adopting Chapter 390 of the Albany Municipal Code and granting a non-exclusive telecommunications franchise to Casco Communications, Inc. for the construction and operation of a telecommunications system, and fixing terms, conditions, and compensation of such franchise, and declaring an emergency.
Move for second reading, entitled only.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, second reading.
An ordinance adopting Chapter 390 of the Albany Municipal Code and granting a non-exclusive telecommunications franchise to Casco Communication, Inc. for the construction and operation of a telecommunications system, and fixing terms, conditions, and compensations of such franchise, and declaring an emergency.
Adoption of the ordinance?
Sure. Okay, and discussion. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right, next is adoption of a resolution, and this is one that is very much needed. I think probably all of us have had maybe some calls or concerns from citizens on the need for pedestrian improvements on, um, Highway 20. Um, there's a resolution on page 37, we've got questions of staff, or...
I have three questions. You know, they're saying that, you know, there's been a lot of rear-enders, you know, and things like that. And I just wonder how wise it is to have crosswalks in the middle of the busiest highway. I mean, I just, I just question that, because you're going along, and it's really, you're concentrating on going, if somebody's there in the crosswalk or whatever, it's like, it's just difficult. And I just wonder, you know, on a busy highway, if it's wise, I don't know. I know, I see Mark looking at me like, "Well, yeah."
Are you crazy?
No. There is, there is a tension there of, you know, trying to get the vehicles through town, but also providing opportunities for people to get out of their vehicles. And obviously, as a busy road, that creates a barrier for people to be able to get to and from what is a pretty dense commercial area into the residential areas to the north. So the crosswalks are already in there, and those went in several years ago. This project here is just to make them a little more visible with these beacons that'll flash when they're activated by the pedestrians.
I had a person that sent me a message, I can't remember if it was Facebook or email, but he'd said that they were, he was the one over by Bain on that crosswalk and waited 20 minutes to be able to, till somebody could stop, you know, so he could be able to get through.
I believe that, yeah.
So, I know. And, you know, I, you know, you think most people maybe just go on down and hit the traffic light and be able to cross. Probably would have saved some time, but people just like to go the closest route for wherever their destination is and cross that route. But, yeah, Rich, did you have a comment, or...
Yeah, well, I was the one who got a local constituent come in and give me an earful about getting rear-ended at that place, or almost hitting a pedestrian. And within a couple of days, there were three or four. And it seemed to me that it was a little strange that I would have nothing for months and weeks, and all of a sudden, in three days, get, or four days, get three people. But, I mean, if you can see it from a distance, then you know what's happening. And that's, that's the bottom line.
That's true.
If you can, on 12th Street in Salem, the one that's going across between Willamette University and, and the Japanese version of Willamette University, right there next to the Parkway. I mean, you can see it back from, I don't know, two blocks, three blocks. So you know what's happening.
Yeah.
So I would move for adoption.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. All right, next is report. And who wants to lead on this one? Looks like I've got two chiefs coming up.
Tonight, we wanted to provide you with an update of the design selection process for the new downtown fire station, Station 11, or replacement of the fire station, and the new Albany Police Department building. Just to refresh your memories, Public Safety Facility Review Committee recommended that, that our two departments go out for an RFQ, RFP process, to see who all was qualified and interested in presenting design, design proposals to our city. And then from there, narrow it down to a RFP process where we actually received their proposals. And so, at the council's direction, we did that. And went out and, I know for the Fire Department, we received six design teams that were interested in presenting. And I'm not sure, I think you were four, the Police Department was four. And then from that, we then narrowed it down, each agency narrowed it down to three design teams to actually present proposals. And they did that about three, four weeks ago. They came in, each one of those three design teams presented separately to the Fire Department, and then, and then a couple of weeks later, to the Police Department. And we received those proposals, and then those presentations, or at least their, their boards that they presented to us, were put up at the library to solicit public feedback. Each of us took those to our agencies, and, and we sought feedback from our personnel. They were taken, at least the, the Fire Departments were taken to the Public Safety Commission. I also took it to rural boards. And I'm sure the police chief presented it to other people as well, to get as much feedback as we could. And then last Friday, the design team got back together to score the applications, and then to select a successful design team for each, each one of the, of the two proposals. With that, I do want to take a second and just thank the members of the Design Selection Committee. We had four common members that sat on both Design Selection Committees. Public Works Community Development Director, Mark Shepherd, Assistant City Engineer, Stacy Bel Castro, former State Senator Frank Morris, and then retired Sheriff Dave Burright. From the Fire Department side, I also had my Assistant Chief Shane Wooton, and then our Union President Jason Kastenstein.
We had Captain Jeff Heinrich, and then also Officer Justin Alexander from the Association.
And so we, we felt like we'd put together a couple groups of design, or of subject area experts, if you will, and then also interested parties from that Public Safety Review Committee, and then other area experts in, in these types of proposals, in order to give us the best possible look at what we were, what we were selecting. So, I do want to thank them. At the end of the process, we had three design firms. As I said, PD had three design firms. There was one design firm that chose to submit a proposal for both Police and Fire. And that design team was McKenzie out of the Portland area. And McKenzie was the design team that was selected by both of us in order to move forward in the process. McKenzie's designed quite a few fire stations and police stations throughout the Pacific Northwest. Definitely, as they were presenting to us, you could tell that they knew what they were doing. And they were a very quality team that understood what we were looking for and saw the big picture, as far as helping us throughout the entire process to get the best value that, that we could in both the downtown fire station and a police station. So, there is actually a representative in the back of the room right now, Jeff Humphries from McKenzie, and he'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. At this point in time, all of the five firms, as I said, there was one common firm, so all of the, the, or I should say, the other four firms have been made aware that they did not get it. And we're in the middle of a seven-day protest period. But absent any protests, which would end this Friday, we would ask that the council allow us to move forward with awarding the next portion of this process to McKenzie. And with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions, or if you had any questions for the representative from McKenzie, I'm sure he'd be happy to answer as well.
Questions? Yeah, Floyd?
Each firm presented a concept. My understanding of the RFP is we are now the owners of those concepts. So we're free to exchange that. And if McKenzie's successful, we can say, "We really liked the concept that was in Submittal A, and we'd like you to consider that in Final Design." Is that accurate?
Yeah, that is correct, yes.
And what the proposal was, and the renderings we've seen, is not to be considered a representation of the Final Design. That was what they asked us to consider, their response to our RFP. And so there will be further work to refine the concepts and the design that we will see and the community will see.
Most definitely. As they presented, each one of them said that this was created in a vacuum. We didn't sit and meet with them and say, "This is what we want you to move this over here and, and design it like this." But it was their concept of what they felt that we would be looking for based on the information, the brief amount of information that we provided. With that being said, yeah, there'll be more work involved in moving things around and getting things to fit our needs as best as we can.
And I guess the other comment is, the original proposal that came out of the Public Safety Review Committee was that we offer up $40,000 per participant, $120,000 per facility to get the concepts. And then through their process and some input, that was altered in the RFQ and RFP process. We ended up paying zero for the proposals.
That's correct.
So off the top, we would have saved $240,000 already.
Correct.
So...
Yeah, go ahead. He also had his hand up. Two things. One, as I recall, there was the possibility of savings if a single organization got both. And is that possibility of savings written down someplace, or...
That could be possible. The, the price for the A and E services was not considered and cannot be considered in the actual selection of it. But there could be some economies of scale.
And secondly, there's, at this point now, going to be quite a design situation going on. Who's going to be doing that, and who's going to do the input? And who are they going to report to? And how much is that going to cost us? And, oh, maybe that's more than one question.
So we're going to be doing, as the chiefs of the department, we're going to be doing, and our staff are going to be doing, quite a bit of that. One of the things that we would be looking at doing is, once we get into the construction, at least, phase of it, hiring a, I think I heard the term clerk of the works today, somebody to help manage that portion of the process.
And I think, too, to address what I think you're getting at, Councilor Callum, is built into the RFQ or RFP process was a requirement that our design team have a civic engagement component, so that they will be handling, you know, getting out, meeting with the public, offering up ideas, soliciting ideas. We think that's a really critical piece of the overall project.
My question was more from the perspective of, from an engineering perspective or from a builder perspective. The things that a police officer or a fireman are going to thank are important, sometimes can be done easier or better, or even worse. But, I mean, it's going to be different from the perspective of how you build it, and how important that is. So when the time comes that you say, "We need five bays 15 feet wide," or whatever they are, someone says, "Well, you know, if you don't make that at least 16 feet wide, well, when they make the turn..." I mean, it's a, just a, an expertise about building that...
And that goes back to John's comment about having a clerk of the works. We, you may recall that we use that model with our, our library, and to great effect. I mean, we...
Actually, I don't, but I wasn't here.
Well...
But that's okay.
I remember it really well.
I bet.
And I was really impressed with the good work that was done. And the person that we had, I, I hope we could use again, because he's got some really great expertise. You know, I used to work in the construction industry myself, and oftentimes, I was employed by a clerk of the works. I would report to them to, and I, I think one of the values of having that is that the benefit of the doubt goes to the client as opposed to the architect or the contractor. And I, and, and also, oftentimes, because of their experience, they can make suggestions to value-engineer the facility and hold down your costs. It's not a cheap, it's, it's a little more expensive at the front end, but I think the savings really justify using that kind of a service.
The thought that brought it up was, when you start talking about standby power, we have a school here in town that has solar paid for by other people. That the school gets the benefit. You don't have to buy a generator. The whole thing is sitting there. It's basically, you get to use it for 20 years, and ratepayers actually pick up the bill. There is those kinds of things that instead of a generator, you use this plus, you know, and you might get, you might get a less expensive option. And that takes care of my needs.
And I think, I think that was one of the reasons, at least from the fireside, that we were happy to select McKenzie. They had, have done this multiple times before. In fact, we have used them once before. They helped us with the design of Fire Station 12, or the redesign, excuse me, I should say, of Fire Station 12, when we did the seismic upgrade there. And so we really saw in their proposal that expertise, if you will, and that history of having done this more than once, which I think will be an advantage to us.
And that's the same with the police station. They've built several police stations within Oregon.
Ray?
As you see this unfolding, what, how do you perceive the timeline before things are actually brought back to council to weigh in?
As far as the next steps?
Yeah, I mean, at some point, we're going to have to sign off on these things. It's not, we're just not going to be doing this in a vacuum. At what point do we get to see some of these designs or whatever?
Oh, to see the actual designs? I don't know. We haven't really discussed that.
Defer to Mark on the construction schedule. I know he's right on top of it.
Well, the first thing you're going to see is a contract with McKenzie. Staff will negotiate a contract. That'll be brought back to council for your consideration and ultimately, your approval, assuming we get to a contract price that staff feels we can support. Then we'll, we'll work into that process of civic engagement. I know McKenzie had talked about taking staff to some police and fire facilities, not just ones they've designed, bringing back some concepts. I think, once they have some of that information from the civic engagement piece, and we've kind of, we've settled on at least the skeleton of the design, that would come back to council then. Prior to, and we've got to lay this all out for, for the bond measure and the timing there. So I think it's about the end of February, when that has to be finalized, so that we can write the ballot title and get things finalized. So it's going to be fairly quickly here in the new year that you'll start seeing something back. But I think that civic engagement piece will be the first part.
So were you needing council direction then tonight to enter into that, to the contract? Is that what you were...
No, just, it, it's kind of a heads-up for you. Again, we'll enter into negotiations with McKenzie, and assuming that we, we reach an agreement, then that will be brought back to you for approval under our standard purchasing rules.
You know, because I think for, to make sure that we're very, you know, clear and kind of open to, and, you know, when it comes up to a ballot measure, what was brought to us as this report, would also be nice to have that down in writing. Because, you know, what you're communicating, it'd be nice for us to be able to have that, yes, we have been informed on this as the council. Because other words, we've had no paperwork of anything down over either design. This is the first time, as a full body, we've heard this, and we have not seen any design also. So it'd be, to make sure that we kind of keep a little paper trail going of all the communication that has been brought to the council, I think would be very helpful.
You bet. And I think it's important to, to keep in mind, and I think Councilor Collins alluded to this, you're not selecting, we're not selecting the design, we're selecting the design team. And of course, part of that was based on the design, you know, their draft design they brought to us. But that's not the selection that's being now, made now. It's who do we want to, to move this forward? And we'll take pieces and parts of probably all three of those proposals and bring that forward, you know, based on the expertise of the chiefs, the architect, the civic input, too, so...
Sharon? I'd just like to speak in support of the, the concept of clerk of the works. You're going to have that function somewhere in the process, whether the engineer, architect performs to be the owner's rep, whether staff represents the owner's interest, or whether you have the clerk of the work, which represents the owner's interest, with a diminished role for staff. Having been through major facility improvements, I think having that neutral clerk of the works is very critical, because sometimes they act as the arbiter. Having the engagement of the technical staff in the design process is very, very critical to the long-term success. Years and years ago, in the mid-'70s, I happened to co-author an article called "The Operator Joins the Design Team" with representatives from Brown and Caldwell. And it was the first time that we had operational staff involved from the very assumption level all the way up through the 90% design level. And, you know, simple little things like, you know, why do you have the door opening that way? Do you put the drain in the low spots in the middle of the floor? You know, what type of pumps do you select? But the success of a project is often determined by the acceptance of the operating staff. And hearing the, the day-to-day functional... And hearing the, the day-to-day functional requirements that operations staff has is critical. So, I think the clerk of the works, I think that's what the Y has used in their facility. I think Kevin Nichols was probably their clerk of the works. But they're on the job daily, they're there to represent the owner, they watch out for the owner's interest, and they act as the arbiter and bring decision packages back to the owner. So I think that's a good model to work with.
And I think, too, we need to be somewhat protective of the two chiefs, who regardless, are going to end up spending some time with this, but they have full-time jobs, and I don't think we want to try and turn them into construction managers, so.
I would absolutely agree with that. So, I, I'd just like to say, I appreciate the process they went through, I appreciate the work that the Public Safety Committee did in participating, and, you know, we have a paper trail through the minutes we've received from the Public Safety Committee. Their work is not yet done, they have a meeting tomorrow night, we'll see what that brings forth. But, you know, they've waded through a lot of material, and they've looked at a lot of detail that we, we haven't, and nor do I think we ultimately need to. There may be some pieces that we should, but we looked at the concept, we asked a number of private citizens to participate in that process, they've ferreted through, they've looked at the pros and cons of a lot of options, and they came through with some recommendations, and I think the recommendations will be manifested in the concepts for the design.
Okay, any other questions, like Dick?
These designs are available someplace for us to look at?
Yeah, we have, and I don't know how much longer, Stacy has the sketchboards that were presented by the consultants. They actually were up at the library each for a week, I believe, but if you want to see those conceptual drawings...
Bill to library?
No, Stacy has them, although I think some of the consultants are coming back to pick those up soon, so just contact Stacy, and she can give you, we do have information in the proposals, too. The process wasn't just the presentation, there was an actual written proposal that we went through, and there's, there's pictures in there and renderings there that we can share with you.
The renderings would be nice to see for, you know, the firm that's being chosen.
150 mile hike during the time of the library.
Yeah.
And I didn't get out there.
Yeah, so, yeah, it'd be nice to, nice to see the copy. Okay, anything else? All right, thank you, chiefs, great job. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is business from the council. Rich, anything this evening?
Just a question about Monday's addition, the TLT.
Yes, it will be on the agenda. I already told them I wanted to add to it.
Oh, thanks.
Okay, all right, anything else? Ray, Floyd?
Nothing.
Okay, Bessie?
I just had one thing, I had someone call me about, and I know, Mark, we've talked about this many ti, a few times before, between Fred Meyer and Bymark. Apparently, that is a crosswalk, that is not a crosswalk, but people use it all the time. And apparently, this person saw a person in a wheelchair get hung up on the, the center divider, and so they had to stop and help him off, and whatever, and so I'm just wondering if there's any way that something can be done there to create a crosswalk? I mean, I, I can't remember what the reason was, whether it was, because it's halfways between, what is it, 14th and Pacific, Sandy and Pacific? And so, I just wondered, you know, is there any way, because so many people use that, and, I mean, talk about going over Highway 20, this is just about as bad, but after they saw that, they just wanted to know if there's anything that can be done.
I will, I don't remember the history on that, but I'll, I'll talk with Ron Irish, we'll look into it, and, and get back to you then.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you. That's all.
Okay, all right, Dick, anything? Nope. And I didn't, and it was just to bring up that we will have the TLT discussion on Monday. And Wes, anything, or how did your meeting go?
Well, I figured the council might be interested in the report of the diplomatic mission to Lebanon. And just in general, people were very gracious, you know, I think their city council is committed to looking at, you know, their own intake, you know, that's an understandable position from their point of view, if they think they can do it for less money than what they would have to pay us over time, you know, that's probably what most of us would want to look at. They did agree, however, with the proposal from their city manager and from me, that we would work with their consultant to address some questions that we have about, you know, the canal, as a part of that, that study. What I offered up was that we would cover the costs of any questions that we add to the scope of work, and we haven't seen the scope of work yet, so I don't know what that represents. You know, I did indicate that stormwater was certainly an issue to us, and basically, what we're trying to get at is to ensure that there is recognition of the downstream consequences of actions that are taken in Lebanon. And, you know, I think there was a general acceptance of that, and, you know, we, a lot of goodwill there, I think, you know, we tried to remind each other that there are a lot of things that the city of Albany and the city of Lebanon cooperate on, and we get along very well with them. You know, our police departments, I think, work very well together, and have in the past. You know, we just had a downtown, kind of a workshop here on downtown renewal, that a bunch of folks from Lebanon came over on a bus, including their city manager and downtown folks, to talk about how we've done things, and to, to, you know, share ideas. So there's, you know, far more, I think, of a record, or a far longer record of cooperation and collaboration between the two cities than there is dispute. But in this case, there is a real conflict of interests. They have some very definite interests, and we have ours, and, and we need to try and sort those out. And, you know, I explained, too, that it was my understanding, and I think it was an understanding that was generally held by our city council, that, that Lebanon was proposing to go off the canal, to stop using it as a water intake for a number of years. I mean, we were informed of that back, I think around 2006 or '07, and I think they've kind of bounced back and forth on that issue themselves, and so it now appears that they're kind of back to wanting independence, and feeling that they might be able to do that more cheaply than to try and, and, and work with us. My view is, is that regardless of whether they take water from the canal for drinking water purposes, the canal goes right through the city of Lebanon, and there are other issues that are important. Like I said, downstream impacts of stormwater, flooding, the potential for flooding, if, if you don't control that. There are issues from the city of Lebanon's perspective about use of the canal as an amenity, and about use of the canal for, using water for, you know, adjusting the water levels in Cheetah Lake. And so, there are a range of issues that we're going to have to sort out with Lebanon over time, and, and I think this was a good start, at least from, you know, the impression that I got, it was a good start toward, you know, recognizing each other's mutual needs, and, and, you know, trying to set a framework that we can, we can have some discussion. I don't want to leave the impression that I think this is going to be easy, or that we won't have future disagreement, I suspect there will be, but I at least think this is a, a good first step.
Good. Okay. Questions? Okay, all right, anything else?
No, I just, they, by consensus, their city council agreed to let their city manager negotiate with me, with our team, on what that scope of work would look like for the, the study, so, yeah, so we're, it was basically the same action that you took.
Sharon, just a, just a reminder, we'll have a short ARA meeting following this meeting.
Okay, anything else? Staff have anything else?
I have one, one, just a quick item, just wanted to highlight some of the hidden work that the community development department does. We got word just last month that we have passed our recertification for our community rating system, and this relates to flood insurance rates, and the city participates, there's a lot of different things we have to do, and every year, we have to go through a, it's, it's a fairly straightforward, but it's a paper audit, and it's something staff has to do, and every five years, we go through a much more intense audit that involves multiple departments. But we did get notice, Melissa Anderson, who manages that for us, that we're in good standing. Just about four years ago, we improved our ratings such that insurance rates, flood insurance rates dropped for our citizens. So it's an important thing, but it's really kind of a behind-the-scenes thing, so.
That's good, good news. All right, okay, not seeing anything else. We do have a work session on Monday, November 17, and then a special work session is December 1, and a regular session is December 3. With that, we adjourned, and thank you.